Welcome, everyone. I would like to call this committee the whole meeting on Tuesday, October 1st, 2024, at 4:00 PM to orders. Lindsey, may we have roll call, please?
Fenatia?
Present.
Nemic?
Here.
Salet?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Begic?
Here.
Warren, present.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any changes to the agenda? Yes, Jamie.
If I could, I'd like to make a motion to modify the agenda to add an issue of the recent vacancy at the Bay County Building Authority due to the recent passing of Mr. Bedore. It's an unexpected vacancy.
Okay.
Support.
Support. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seen none, motion carries. Okay, thank you, Jamie. Now I need approval of the agenda.
Some move.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seen none, motion carries. I need a motion for the minutes of...
Some move.
Support.
Any corrections? Seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seen none, motion carries. At this time, it's for public input. You want to listen to address this committee? Please come forward. Going once, going twice. Public input is closed. Petitions and communications. The Bay County Executive proposed 2025 budget overview presentation. Yes, Mr. Barsha?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make just a couple of comments first and say that this is Shawna Walraven's last formal Board of Commissioners meeting where she serves as the Finance Director. And I know we all are going to miss her terribly. She's been the ultimate professional and we've all been able to feel very confident about the work that Shawna Walraven, Kim Pressnitz, and her team have performed over the course of her tenure. And I told her earlier today at a little reception we had thrown by her staff that it will be possible for her to be succeeded but not to be replaced because she has been a absolutely phenomenal, dedicated Finance Director and public servant. Prior to her serving as Bay County Treasurer, she also served as the Assistant Corporation Counsel. So, the last 12 years of her life, of her professional career, have been dedicated to Bay County. And I want to congratulate her on her new position with the Bay Area Community Foundation where she will be in a position to continue to enhance the quality of life for all Bay County residents through the wonderful work that the Community Foundation does. So, congratulations, Shawna, on your new position. You're not going to be too far away and our friendship will all remain for years to come. And we just want to thank you for your service to Bay County and say we will continue to work closely with you into the future, just not in the role as a county employee, but we're going to miss you terribly. And I want to thank you. And before Shawna presents the budget, I would just like to inform the Board of Commissioners that I did, we did make a slight adjustment from the time that you were informed in the budget hearings as we compiled the county budget, that I recommended and Shawna included an increase of $25,000 for Bay Future. As you know, we've been cited, Bay County and Dyer County, Tennessee, as well as Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, were singled out by the New York Times and Esquire Magazine as rebounding from the recession of 2008, 2009. Between 2009 and 2016, we lost nearly 10% of our businesses in Bay County, but in the last four years, we've increased the number of businesses in Bay County by 12%. And so, we were highlighted, the three counties nationally, and a big amount of credit goes to Bay Future. Of course, they're our public-private partnership and is a premier sponsor. Bay County, we facilitate and do everything that we can to, you know, to support their efforts. And so, given the great work that they have been doing and also the fact that we expect additional investment in the months and years ahead as a result of some of the huge manufacturing investments that have made to date, I would like, I think that $100,000 would be a reasonable amount for us to be a premier sponsor of Bay Future on. So, I just wanted to highlight that as a change from the hearings that we had earlier with the Commission relative to what was included in the budget.
Thank you, Jim. Thanks. Shawna, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. This is the overview of the Executive's recommended budget in Bay County. We are going to go through the introduction, revenues, expenditures, and budget recommendations. As always, this budget strives to balance the needs of the citizens and its employees while ensuring fiscal responsibility and excellent service to Bay County government. Just get the budget process, you're very familiar with this. We are already at October 1st when the county submits, the county executive submits the 2025 proposed budget to the Board of Commissioners, and then the Board of Commissioners gets to work right away on October 3rd on working on your budget, and budget must be adopted by December 31st. Moving to revenue, or moving to, excuse me, moving to budget summary at the executive level. So, total county spending for all funds is budgeted at $159 million. This is up only slightly over 2024. You can see the breakdown there, the use of fund balance in the general fund, in 911 Central Dispatch, as well as mosquito control. The expenditures are budgeted at $47.3 million, which is up from the 2024, $45.6. The majority of the $1.7 million is due to the contractual pay increases, which you know this is our third year of, and then the health insurance, as well as capital outlay projects and operating transfers out. Moving on to revenue, as you see, taxes comprise 44% of our revenue. I thought this was an interesting point to look at, that historically, this is a slightly lower percentage. We normally rely on a little bit higher percentage of property tax revenue. So, we have been doing exactly what the Board has asked for in searching for grants and searching for other funding opportunities. And obviously, ARPA has created this opportunity as well by funneling other funds outside of property taxes to the county. And to that point, you can see our collection history of property tax completed by local treasurers, as well as our county treasurer, collecting delinquent property tax collections are up, property taxes are up. I will caution you that over the last three years, there have been a lot of programs available to people to help them pay property taxes. Many of those programs have expired and those funds are no longer available, so that is something the Board and the Executive will want to watch for as it continues to progress. I expect that there will be more delinquent receivables for the county treasurer to collect. Our 2025 expenditures, wages and benefits, 65% of the total. This is on par with previous years. Expenditures by function, as you can see, the largest is public safety, only slightly ties with general government, as well as the judicial branch being a large portion of our budget. Another one to watch is health insurance. Employers' health insurance contributions are projected to be $5.9 million for 2025, and the budget for 2024 was estimated at 5.4. You know, management has a plan that was part of collective bargaining last time. There's an employee healthcare committee that is meeting to address this. Unfortunately, costs are just skyrocketing. So, as you can see, that creep going up and up and up from $3.9 million in '22 to an anticipated 5.9 in '25. This is hot off the press, hasn't even been received by the retirement board yet, so don't tell them, just kidding. The valuation of the pension system came out, and our valuation is at 132%. So, the employer contribution to the pension system will remain at the 4% for 2025. For the general group, sheriff's group is funded at 134%, and the contribution will remain the same. Here's a look at the historical funding of the pension fund. As you can see, and this is, Kim and I talked about this a bit, 2021, it looks as though there's a huge spike. I'd like you all to remember, this is just a point in time snapshot. So, if you were watching your investments all in 2021, they were not as great as they were on December 31st, when they were amazing. So, it looks as though there was a spike, but that was really just due to the one, the one time, that snapshot, one day in time. And so, if you watch the trend, this valuation is in line with the trend, removing that 2021 year. They also smoothed that over a five-year period, so you never experience the large bumps and dips, but even so, 2021 was an anomaly. Major capital expenditures, the largest is information systems for general fund. You have to remember, this is $555,000 to support over 600 users. It is really the infrastructure for county government and county business. It's how we used to think of bricks and mortar. You need the information systems in order to do the jobs. If you think of it as kind of a skeletal system, it touches and is responsible for everything that the county does. This is not a bunch of new computers or software. These are basic things, infrastructure things like network systems, backups, storage, servers, cybersecurity improvements. Buildings and grounds, parks and rec, smaller capital budget than normal, $152,000. This is parking lot, countywide roof repairs, flooring, again, you know, the things that are necessary to maintain the system. Secondary road patrol has requested four new vehicles and equipment for the vehicles, and there is funds for a building facility assessment of the law enforcement center to see how much life we have left in the building and if we need to be planning for any major repairs or any different improvements. So, if we look at a comparison of the general fund budget over the last years, you can really see in '22 and '23, the infusion of the capital from ARPA. And as you see, '22 closed out with a deficit of 1.8, and '23, you could see that we closed with 5.2. And to preemptively answer your question, why did that happen? There was about nearly $2 million enrolling projects, projects that couldn't be completed in that year, that were budgeted in that year, along with the infusion of the ARPA funds. It makes it look distorted in the budget, but really, it's a timing issue. And so, as we're planning for 2024, unfortunately, that ARPA funding is gone. We will not have that infusion anymore. But we don't have final numbers, obviously. We're still working in '24 as we plan for '25's budget. Here are your general and budget stabilization fund balances. As you can see, healthy, healthy balances, but costs are also increasing. Your total budget stabilization is $7.3 million. Your assigned and unassigned is $14.4 million, which brings your total to $21.7 million. Just to note, you all know, but at the, at last month's board meeting, we adopted to amend the ordinance from the 20% cap to the 15% cap. The amount of money that is currently in there is 18.99%, which is considered a prepayment on future years, so we will work to absorb those payments over the next few years based upon any deficit or surplus. Budget recommendations, I think you're in a good spot. You are planning to use approximately $3.1 million of unassigned fund balance to balance the '25 budget. It's largely wages and fringes, some capital repairs and charges. Of course, all the departments continue to research additional funding revenue sources and grants to cover those expenditures. You need to continue to prioritize capital outlay projects and other service and charges to reduce the level of the 2025 projects. So, as we complete these, hopefully, they're one-time projects and then you won't incur those expenses anymore. Your capital outlay countywide is over $1.1 million. So, additional decisions and adjustments will have to be made by the Commission before there's a final 2025 budget. I would also want to note that this is important for departments, that in the Budget Appropriations Act, we did add in language that we will not be approving contracts through the budget process anymore. It has become cumbersome, and so the budget will just be that. It will just be for budgeting, and if departments need to seek approval of contracts, they need to do that outside of the budget process. And we can certainly assist you with that. So, since I have a captive audience, well, first, I'm going to ask if there are any budget questions, any budget questions?
Is there any questions on the board at this time?
No questions? So, since I have a captive audience, I'm going to make a few more remarks, if you don't mind. This is my third and my last budget presentation, and as County Executive Barsha said, I've served in different capacity, and I can assure the citizens of Bay County that in all those areas, you're being extremely well-served. You have an incredibly dedicated staff who comes to work and works really hard every day. And first, I want to start with you, Jim. As Bay County Executive, it's been an honor to work for you. You're supportive, caring, and you truly recognize the importance that each person plays in the county. I'd like to highlight all the work that goes into this budget, so when you see it, it's pretty, it's all pretty, and there's, you know, large numbers, and I don't think it really captures in the budget or in the audit, all the work that truly goes into it. And it starts at the department level. Kristin will be the first one to tell you how many budgets she has and how long it takes, but it's not just her. Everyone has a very important role to play. And Kim is such a hard worker that we have to tell her, "The building will not crumble if you take vacation or if you leave," which we tell her, but we're not actually sure because she's never done it, so we're not, we don't know. So, you have to recognize what an incredibly hard worker Kim Pressnitz is as Assistant Finance Officer. She's the keeper of knowledge and all the documents, and she's very dedicated, intelligent, and very humble. Travis Schuman, Julie LaPrairie, Jody D. Russell, you have a great team of staff accountants there. They're in charge of enforcing and implementing government accounting standards, which are a ton of fun, and making sure everything's in excellent shape. They work hard. They sometimes face difficult tasks, but they have to dig in and figure it out. Diane Skinner is our accounts receivable clerk. She always has a smile on her face. She handles difficult tasks without frustration. Norine Wyler, our accounts payable clerk, special thanks for her assistance on this PowerPoint. She's committed to making sure that her job gets done and really owns her area. We appreciate it. Jody Galan, if there's a neck that turns the head, that's her. She's a high performer. She always makes sure that everything gets done. And as I said, ISD is the skeletal system. Without them, none of this happens. Julie O'Malley is a dedicated manager. She cares very much about ISD. We've implemented a project plan, which has been, I think, a huge improvement throughout the county, and it's been her work that's been instrumental in doing that. Nick Piercy, Brandon Short, Brian Emmendorfer, they are a powerhouse senior IT team, lots of knowledge there. We appreciate all of their work. Jason McCulain is focused on 911 and public safety ISD projects. He's always willing to work on those, and they're time-sensitive and very important, so his work is also very important. Jody Rosinski, we call her Cruz Director. She's thoughtful, organized, friendly, but always helpful and a great person to have on any project. Lucas Harborn and Eric Jaworski, they're the helpful voices on the help desk. Eric's been a great addition to our team, and if you guys don't already see Lucas and get his joke of the day, I'm letting the secret out, stop him and ask him. Nick Page, who's filming for us now, is the kind of employee that everyone wishes they had, friendly, helpful, and always there. Purchasing is the reason that we're able to get a budget of this size out. Francis is dedicated, has impeccable integrity, and is committed to excellent work. Jessica Foss has a wonderful personality, has been helpful, positive, willing to do what it takes to get the job done. And I can't not mention my department directors, who are my team, who, special thanks to Amber, Tiffany, and Kristin, Central Service Department Directors, who provide all of the support to the entire county. They're a very important team, and I don't think you could put together a better team if you tried. And for those of you who have historical information, you know that the Finance Officer and the Treasurer historically have a bit of an adversarial relationship between the positions, but that's not the case with Weston Prince. He's an asset to the county. He's worked closely with the finance team, and he cares more about getting things done than about who gets the credit, and he's a true public servant, and I thank your staff as well. And lastly, thank you to the Commission for allowing me to work with you and advise you. It's truly been a privilege. Thank you.
That's all.
Yes, sir.
You've downloaded all this information onto a flash drive, right?
Yeah, sure. It's all there.
All the knowledge. So, all that stuff, but I know you have a lot of it.
We do a Vulcan mind meld. We just, oh, no, no.
As long as we don't get in trouble with any of the grants and the funding, and, you know, the government gets a little picky at times with some of that stuff, so.
Absolutely. The County Executive and I have a transition plan in place, and we're meeting with staff, and so there will be a seamless plan until an appointment is made.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Shawna, it's been a pleasure working with you, and you are going to be greatly, so thank you.
Before we forget, I want to thank Mr. Barsha, Kim, and Shawna, and the whole group for giving us, presenting us to our budget. Now, it's up to us to decide. So, thank you. Thank you, Kim.
Moved to receive. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seen none, motion carries. Now, so, public hearing regarding proposed 2025 Bay County budget.
Motion to go to regular order. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seen none, motion carries. At this time, it's for public input for the 2025 county budget. Is there anyone wishing to address us at this time? Going once, going twice. Public input is closed on the 2025 budget.
Motion to go to regular order, business. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seen none. We're going back in regular order. Number C, Retirement Administrator, purchase of military service time for Zachary DeZurka, Sheriff's Department.
Some move.
Support.
During discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seen none, motion carries. The Health Department, Eagle Grant Funding, 2024, 2025 year.
Some move.
Support.
During discussion on this. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seen none, motion carries. My Community Dental Centers, MCDC agreements renewal for 2024, 2025.
Some move.
Support. During discussion. Just one.
I think we got a call today about somebody with a dental issue and couldn't get it anywhere else, no doubt, if we're taking anything. So, I had a friend who died at about 34 from an abscess tooth. So, you know, if you don't take care of them, it's not a good thing. So, glad we can have that.
Do you want, yes, Jim?
If I could, just before Joel speaks, I know that My Community Dental Center Clinic was established and worked out with Joel and I through the Bay County Health Department. And there are 19 such centers in Michigan, I believe, and it is 100% federally funded. So, while we've had a serious issue in the past with dental issues being presented at the emergency room of local healthcare providers, McLaren and My Michigan, I think at one point, 2,100 visits the emergency room for residents seeking relief for severe oral pain and abscess teeth. As Chairman Begic mentioned, it's a very serious issue if you, you can get serious complications as a result of dental infections. That can be life-threatening. And I know, as I've talked about the dental clinic to residents around Bay County, they have expressed that it takes, there's a very long wait time to get in. But perhaps we could have a conversation with them for patients who are in extreme pain and possibly a life-threatening situation with their dental health, that somehow they be prioritized. But because it's 100% federally funded, it serves residents from the region, not just Bay County. And it's such a popular program that apparently, the last time I spoke with Director Strauss about it, he said there is a long wait list and a number of people awaiting dental care at the center. So, it was a great thing that we did. I just wish that we had more capacity out there to serve more residents of the region because we cannot limit it to just Bay County residents. So, with those remarks, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to share that.
Thank you, Jim. Joel, you got anything to talk?
I just wanted to add, there is the Great Lakes Bay Health Centers, and they are on a sliding scale, too. Free Clinic does refer there, I imagine they refer here also, but they have services out there also, out there on Monterey Road, they have dental clinic.
So, I would just add, too, in light of the conversation I've just had with, if you're a Bay County resident and you don't have a medical or a dental home, and you are in need of emergency care, you can call over there, and I would highly recommend that you give them a good assessment of what you're going through. They might be able to put you in within a few days. But if it's routine dental care, it's gonna be probably about a three, maybe four month, even more, longer wait.
Do you know if there's a provision for an emergency situation for the...
Yeah, that's what I was explaining, like, you really need to articulate that if you're looking for an appointment. And some, some people are like, "Well, I could probably live with it." But if you're in great pain, or you've had, especially if you have an abscess or a condition that needs treatment right away, let them know that. If they can't help you, they can help refer you to a dental home.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
Thanks, Joel.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seen none, motion carries. The Personnel Director, covenant agreement.
Some move.
Support.
During discussion on this. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seen none, motion carries. The Finance Officer, analysis of the general fund equity of 2024.
Motion received.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seen none, motion carries. And the update regarding Executive Directive 2007-11.
Moved or saved?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seen none, motion carries. And the payables, the general.
Moved or saved, or support? Moved to...
Moved.
I'm supporting.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seen none, motion carries. Next is referrals. Is there any referrals? Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? Yes.
Before referrals, Mr. Chair, I believe that there was a motion to amend the agenda with Mr. Johnson to discuss the Building Authority Board.
Yeah, so, if I could, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to post a notice of that vacancy and appoint for the Bay County Building Authority at the October Board of Commission meeting, obviously. Yeah, the next one, you know, full board, and then appoint in November, if possible.
Some move. Support.
Or any other discussion? Yes.
So, I believe we have somebody coming off in November. We've got a lot of vacancies on the Building Authority. I think, where we have three or four, I believe.
But right now, we currently have three now because we need one for a forum, and one just passed away, so we're just filling that one up. Yep. For now.
This would, this would just be an emergency appointment.
Just fill in them. Yeah, for now.
Okay.
So, we can get stuff done.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, seen none, motion carries. Thank you, Jamie. Thank you. Unfinished business, none? Any new business? Amber, is there a need for closed session?
Yes, there is, Mr. Chair. I would request a motion to go into closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268, subsection 1H, to discuss a written legal opinion regarding potential contractual closure liability under the Supreme Court decisions of Rafaielli versus Oakland County, Shaper versus Kent County, and Hefon versus State of Michigan.
So, move.
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We gotta take a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Nemic?
Yes.
Fenatia?
Yes.
Salet?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Bradkey? Oh, I'm sorry. Johnson?
Yes.
No, I'm sorry. Johnson?
Yes.
Big Eck?
Yes.
And Mr. Chair, I would note that necessary to be included within the meeting is Finance Officer Shawna Walraven, Assistant Finance Officer Kim Presnitz, Treasurer Weston Prince, the Board Administrative Staff, the Arsenal Corporation Council, that's myself, and County Executive Jim Barsha.
Thank you. Okay, is there any miscellaneous?
Nope.
Is there any announcements?
Nope.
Mr. Chair. Yes. First of all, I want to thank the Commissions, and I know you couldn't be there, Tim, because of a conflict, for attending the groundbreaking of the new Bay County Animal Services and Adoption Center, a ceremonial groundbreaking last Thursday. I think we had about 100 people in attendance. The weather was beautiful, and I just wanted to, again, thank the Board for all of your support in getting us to this point, that we've really, really seen some improvements out there, and when construction is done, we'll have a state-of-the-art facility that will serve the residents and the pet population for decades to come. Some good news, I don't know, Matt spoke with my former fifth-grade teacher, Dorothy Glazza Lance, when I attended Hampton School, she was my fifth-grade teacher, and every year, she continues to send me a birthday card, along with a host of other students that she had. She's lived in Florida, in Eustis, Florida, for the last 30 years, and we talk, you know, a few times a year, usually for an hour or more, and get caught up. She's now 91 years old, and she sent, and she spoke also with Matt and told me she wanted to do, to do something, because Bay County was so good to her. She loved teaching, and she wanted to do something back to help the residents, and she has a passion for pets. So she sent to Matt a check for $70,475, which will be a donation toward something we need at the new center that, you know, that, that isn't currently covered. So, you know, at some point, when we do the dedication, I'd like to have a room or something dedicated to her, because that's quite a substantial donation that she made. And that will help us have even, an even better, better facility for, for the residents who went, who got pets, and maybe a room, or we'll find something to name after her, but that's some great news, and I know that, Matt, also, you had an announcement on something. So, thanks.
Thanks for everybody coming for the ceremony, it was really awesome. And like he said, this Dorothy, that's incredible what she donated today, so we can't thank her enough. But we also have a few other announcements, we have emptied a shelter going on right now until the 15th, and that's where the dogs are $50 and cats are $25. So that's a big deal. As I came over to the meeting, I had three get adopted today, so that was really nice to see. And we have a free clinic, which is always very, very good. Every time we do this clinic, it's on Saturday, October 12th, and it goes from 1:00 to 5:00, and that's where we get free shots for rabies, parvo, distemperment, and we get free microchips. So that event, every time we have done it, has been just outstanding for Bay County residents. The cars line up, and we have veterinarians that volunteer time, and we have donations that cover the cost of the, all the vaccines. So it's an amazing event, so I just want to announce that for the camera and everybody to let all your residents know. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. I got, I got a couple announcements. I know you wanted to, you're in a hurry. First of all, I would like, today's October 1st, and is the opening day of archery bow season for State of Michigan, so I wish all the hunters good luck this year. And second of all, our Limwood Scenic Site project, GoFundMe page is at 12,000. We're trying to reach 25. Once we get 25, there'll be another 25,000 from the state, so we are looking for more donations. So far, Jim's been involved, too, and please donate if you can, so.
And Jimmy Carrick turned 100 years old today.
Yes, yes, he did.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
See ya.